Good evening, Littleton. Welcome back to our regularly scheduled programming, Monday evening meeting. It is July 12, 2021, and we are going to open the meeting in open session and immediately go into executive session, and we will come back out. We're hoping to get back into open session by 6:30. So I understand a motion to go into executive session at this time.
I move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
I do so declare.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify, actually, Mr. Knox.
Aye.
Mr. Noddy.
Aye.
Mr. Glavy.
Aye.
Ms. Napoli.
Aye.
The chair's in favor. So we will be going into executive session at this time, folks. Tune back in at 6:30, and we'll be back underway. Okay, welcome back to the Board of Select meeting for July 12, 2021. We are back in open session, and I'll go through the agenda very quickly, but before we do that, I'd ask the clerk to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, so, little behind. Our executive session went a little longer than we anticipated, so thank you for standing by, folks. We're going to do the organization and read the mail. We will get into a Select Board recognition. That's probably about 10 of. Department of Board updates and requests at 6:50, which will include Police Department have a couple of items on there, and the Fire Department has an item as well. Around 7 o'clock, we have an appointment to the Personnel Committee. At 7:10, we will have an opportunity for public input and members' updates. 7:20, Select Board discussion relative to a right of first refusal for Chapterland. At 7:30, we have a public hearing for a number of entertainment and liquor licenses and entertainment At 7:50, thereabouts, Town Administrator Assistant, Town Administrator will give us an update on senior center, on personnel, some hiring and some opportunities for filling some positions within the town, review of the special town meeting timeline, and request to use the town common by an outside organization. At 8:20, we'll be approving the minutes, and then we're anticipating to adjourn sometime around 8:30. So, Mr. Town Administrator, Mr. Anzaldi, if you've got some mail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have three things that we received in the mail. The first one has to do with an incident that happened on June 23. It was a bee sting situation that became very, very serious. And when we get notification like this, and it's really a good opportunity for the Board to, which you've seen this, but for the community to recognize the fine work that all three, you know, our Fire Department, Police Department, and Dispatch do on a daily basis. This situation could have gone in a different direction, but as you can see, the resident is doing great and is very appreciative of our public safety team. Second issue was another similar situation where on July 7, Chief Pennard, Deputy, I'm sorry, interim Chief Clancy, I'll get that, Tom.
That's the title.
That guy.
So, that guy. So, he informed us of a situation that happened with a kayaker on the morning of July 7 at 6:45, where there was an issue, a cardiac issue, of which the two other kayakers were able to help that person get to the shore, and then immediately our team went to work and, I don't know if we have an update on this individual, but certainly he had to have, he had to get paddles. So, if it wasn't for their work, I'm sure he wouldn't even have had a fighting chance to survive that. So, another opportunity to really, for the community to know again that police, fire, and dispatch.
Public safety team.
It's really the team. The third item is that we received the grants, a grant from Mass. DOT for Shared Streets program. This will allow, as you may recall, there's a sidewalk on Newtown Road. Chris indicated by that pavement to the left, we'll have a crosswalk across the street. Going to the other side of Newtown Road, there'll be handicap, ADA, and AAB accessible ramps, and that project is now possible thanks to the state.
That's right at the entrance to the Yap.
Correct. Yes, thanks. That's it. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Great. All right. All right, so we want to take some time and an opportunity to thank some folks that really have stepped up and served our community quite well through this crazy time that we've called the COVID-19 pandemic. And there's a number of folks that have stepped up and helped their neighbors and that kind of thing, so certainly with that type of community, and thanks goes out to all those folks. But also, we've got Littleton Volunteer Corps and a team of community members that have stepped up as well. And I don't know, Anthony, if you want to take that a step further, or?
So, there's information on the packet, and the first group to, for the Board to recognize is Volunteer Corps, and I know Alex is here, if he wants to maybe come to the podium and?
We have a two-minute time limit.
If you come to the mic, that'd be great. Thanks, Mr. McCurdy.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I present to you the Littleton Volunteer Corps. Almost every member is here tonight. The Volunteer Corps, as it was, has been since 2015, was merged of two functions, which is the Medical Reserve Corps and Community Emergency Response Team. We put that together to have a broad spectrum. The funny part is, I was late to the meeting when I arrived. That's how I ended up with the title of director. So, we've done a lot of training, a lot of wondering when the day was going to come that we'd have to do something. We have a wide variety of backgrounds, people here, all the way from doctor on down to ham radio operator, you name it, they're probably in the group. Not all of us are the youngest people, but we are all very civic-minded people. We've learned to work together really well. In the last months, we've found ourselves in the midst of the COVID response, and in that role, we worked clinics from the first responder clinic all the way to the last clinic, which we just closed down, the Neshoba Valley area clinic. They did this at some risk to themselves, because when this started, we were in clinics that were seeing people, and we were not vaccinated. We shortly thereafter got vaccinated, and that was a big sigh of relief, and we just continued doing it. I will say that I spoke with some of the other groups that we've worked with, which is the Westford Group and some others, and they were quite impressed with our organization. We're down-home people, we're civic-minded, we're friendly, we actually all get along, and we just enjoy doing this, and this is about as far up the radar as we ever want to get. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and we can go from there.
Anybody from the Board have any questions, Mr. McCurdy or the Corps?
Not a question, but just, it's kind of startling to see how many of you there are. I was talking with Alex just a couple weeks ago at Chief Wozinski's retirement, and, you know, mentioned to him that I'd seen your good work on social media with the Devens Clinic and all that, and I've been aware, as an officer of the Business Association, that you guys are out there, but as Alex just alluded to a moment ago, it's amazing how you've maintained doing the great deeds that you do with so little fanfare and under the radar. So, I think it was your idea, Mr. Chairman, to make sure we gave some public recognition where it was due, or did I get the wrong person?
Mr. Knox.
Mr. Knox, I'm sorry. All right. But in any event, it's great to know, and it's not a surprise, I guess, except for the numbers, it's so hard to bring a lot of people together to do anything, especially with the level of involvement that you've all committed yourselves to, and it just speaks so well of the town and of all of you as individuals, and Alex especially. I'm sure there are other factors as to why you ended up in a leadership position, so...
I wasn't there for that decision.
No, but I say, I think they recognized in you the natural capacity, so thank you. Thank you all.
I actually realize I do have a question. Have you developed a response scenario for zombie apocalypse?
That's two or three down the priority list.
I want to just also offer, echoing Mr. Glavy, my heartfelt thanks, especially given that you all are volunteers and like people who are proactive and volunteer their time to help their neighbors like that. It's really one of the things that I think makes this town great, and you are the best thing about it. I thank you very much.
Yeah, so, as a, obviously, we wanted to have you come in here and to give you a public thank you on behalf of the Select Board, as well as the entire community and the surrounding communities as well, because you guys do reach beyond just Littleton residents. And I think, Mr. Anzaldi, do you have something that we can?
Do.
Yeah, so, small token of our appreciation is a Littleton lapel pin that if you guys want to come forward, Mr. Anzaldi can give each one of you one of these lapel pins. But thank you very much for all of your service.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest of it, yeah, yeah, yeah. So while Anthony's handing out the candies, when we were doing this recognition, we wanted to make sure that, again, there's been a lot of people that have stepped up.
Some of you probably have seen your brochure, but I will give each one of you one.
Thank you.
I have. Thank you. Good to see you again.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I know you put a lot of time in here, but we welcome anybody, so.
All right, so they're always looking for volunteers, folks, so anybody that wants to step forward.
I'll tee up the next one if you want to.
Yeah, I got it. So, the, as I mentioned, there's a lot of folks that have helped out their neighbors and have tried to find a way to help through the course of the last couple of years, and there were a lot of questions, a lot of unknowns, and a special group of folks. Not sure, Katrina, if you kind of took the lead on this, I think you did, and if you would like to come forward while I kind of tee this up a little bit. Katrina Wilcox-Hagberg, along with Corey Painter, Jonathan Castillo, and Kevin Davis, brought their skills forward to us, and they supported the Board of Health, they supported the School Committee, gave weekly updates on the status of what's going on at the state level, how does that affect Littleton, and you can certainly speak to this a lot more intelligently than I can, so I'd give you the opportunity, Katrina Wilcox, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I have three names.
Wilcox-Hagberg, yeah.
So, yeah, it's last, I don't know, summer, we, a group of us kind of realized we had skills that may help, like might be able to help filter through some of the noise and the rumors and the just constantly churning information, because this was new, it just emerged, and we were learning something new every day. And it's been an interesting and a whirlwind, I think we can all say, experience. I actually wasn't the one who approached the Board of Health, I'll be honest. Corey Painter and John Castillo and Kevin were actually the first to approach it, and they recruited me.
Sorry.
So, I will give them credit for that. I know I became kind of the face of those meetings, just because of my role as an epidemiologist. But every single one of the four of us have something different that we brought in. Science isn't done individually, so we, it was really good to have someone who has an immunology research background, COVID research background. I have a data scientist background who pulled the data off the state's website at 6:00 PM on Thursday, and I had enough time to turn it around for the 7:00 PM School Committee meeting. So, without Kevin definitely pulling the data down, that wouldn't have happened every week. So, I am, it's definitely an interesting experience, I think we can all speak to. You know, John and Corey went through a lot of the testing stuff, trying to help the schools understand what that meant, and how that could maybe help our school learn what we were or were not experiencing in the schools. At that point, we didn't have information, so that was a really important thing to get our kids back full-time. So, there are a lot of things that we did. I think we are all very grateful for the rates being low and the vaccinations being high, so thank you for our town, so that we can really hopefully keep things steady right now. That would be great.
Awesome. Well, just like the Volunteer Corps, we very much thank you on behalf of the Select Board and the town as a whole, and we do have, did you run out? No. If the four, well, three of you are here, John and Kevin, if you want to come forward, that'd be great. But again, thank you very much for what you did. That's what defines Littleton, right? Everybody kind of stepping forward and helping out their neighbor and sense of community, so that's why we love it here. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Alex.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. So, as some of the room gets cleared, so, under Department of Board updates, we do have an update from the Police Department, and Mr. Anzaldi, if you want to tell us about this award?
Sure, there's two items. Detective Fernandez is here, but I told the chief that I would speak to the first one topic, and then Sergeant Fernandez can fill in any blanks. Chief Pennard put in for a grant with the Northeast Homeland Security Regional Advisory Council. This grant was done some months ago, and we, he received notification that we're going to be awarded $21,000 from this organization. What that's allowing the chief to do is to start the process of upgrading Dispatch Center, and that's, this is really going to be one-tenth of the work that's going to be needed, but it's a great start. So, well done by Chief Pennard in applying for this and successfully applying for it. So, that's the first issue.
Yeah, just to comment on that real quickly, I know that Chief Pennard has done a lot of research and has brought in some local experts who have volunteered their time, frankly, that know all things communication when it comes to public safety, and Ivan Bogosik's been a great resource to Chief Pennard and has aided him with this conversation, and for sure, we will be seeing more capital investments in our communication system. Tom, you can speak to that as well, I'm sure, because it's quite antiquated, but it's close to being antiquated, and there will be something on the horizon that will, the residents can expect. Like you said, this is about a tenth, $21,000, it's about a $200,000 investment to upgrade to where we need to be, and that will be coming.
And that goes hand in hand with the $400,000 that we had a warrant article with from the HCA agreement that the Select Board negotiated with Northbridge, which is the landlord for Amazon, so that's 400,000. I know, really, it's great to have, just like we had earlier with community members that help us, you know, Ivan was somebody who was really just helping us as, it's almost like free consultant.
He's a subject matter expert, and you don't find someone that has that level of expertise in every area of the town business, but it's great when someone does step forward and help us out. Next up, we do have a 4B, we have a police appointment, and...
Why don't you just do a motion?
What's that?
Motion.
Oh, need a motion to accept, I'm sorry. Still your thunder a little bit there, sorry. I understand a motion for accepting the award, the $21,000.
I move that the Select Board vote to accept the grand award from the Northeast Homeland Security Regional Advisory Council in the amount of $21,000 to fund upgrades to the Dispatch Center to improve communication with the Mass. State Police District 6 and surrounding communities.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Great. Thank you very much. Next up, we do have an appointment, and in lieu of the chief or the deputy, because they're otherwise occupied, we have the pleasure of having Detective Sergeant Pablo Fernandez here to present to us an appointment for a reserve officer. And Pablo, if you can come to the mic and take it away, that'd be great. Did you have anything, Anthony, or?
Nope, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight. Appreciate it. This was kind of a privilege to be able to stand up here and present Fred Rentschler to the Board as one of our new appointees. I know that Chief Pennard and Deputy Chief Patterson are away at training and a leadership conference, so we're here today, or tonight, to present Fred Rentschler. Fred's a police officer for 32 years with Acton Police, 34 years in total, retired from Acton Police as a detective sergeant, and I think when I heard that Fred was selected for the position that he, that was open, I was excited to hear about that. I know Fred understands community policing, and he knows this area, lived in this area, so he's going to be a great addition to us. I'm not sure what the protocol is, but do we want to?
So, Fred, if you want to come up to the mic, that'd be great, and just to offer, if any of the Board members have any questions of you, or if you want to say a couple words first, and then if we have any questions, we'll fire away.
My name is Fred Rentschler. I lived in Littleton for seven years on Russell Street, 90s into 2000. I worked in town of Acton since 1988. I spent 32 years there, just retired in January. During that time, I was a patrol officer, detective, court prosecutor, road sergeant, detective sergeant, helped with accreditation. I worked in the drug court for a period of time. I obtained my Juris Doctorate nights, attending night school, so, and I just wrapped up in February after 32-plus years in Acton. And, you know, spent the last five months doing projects I had, I've been looking at for 20 years around the house. I'm ready to start, you know, I had conversations, I heard there might be an opening coming, and I just let it come to fruition, and in the meantime, I've been busy doing stuff at home and loving every minute of it.
Awesome.
So, thank you, and we will have to...
Absolutely. Does anybody have any questions?
Seems like I know.
Seems like I know, right? I think that pretty much says it all.
No questions, just happy that Sergeant Rentschler is looking to join us.
Absolutely.
I think he's qualified.
Thank you for having me.
I think Pablo's looking forward to pick your brain a little bit more.
Absolutely.
All right, I understand a motion to appoint.
I move that the Select Board appoint Frederick W. Rentschler III as Reserve Police Officer for the Littleton Police Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Virtual. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thanks very much. All right. All right, next up, we have Department of Fire Services. What do we call you? Just Tom? Chief Clancy?
I've got the old shirt on. No danger. I'm getting used to it too, so, you know, it's all good.
Chief. Chief Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'm happy to announce that we've received two grants, one earlier this spring from the Department of Fire Services for $12,325, which, and another from the Littleton Light Department Community Development Grant, the Commissioners awarded us, one for $11,450 on June 30, and we've used these, we're using these to procure some new battery-operated hydraulic extrication tools. So, these are the state-of-the-art tools, no more dragging around a hose. When I bought Engine 2 in 2016 and finally got an electric pump on the truck, I thought we were on state-of-the-art, and that's all done now, six years later. These things are faster, easier to deploy, you can use them in a building. We used one recently at Devens on a roof at a fire, a commercial building fire, it's a prop-up device where otherwise we'd have to bring a power plant and hoses. They're just, they're just cutting-edge, and lithium-ion batteries are the reason for that. So, we'd love for the Board to approve this, and we're saving the taxpayers, you know, $25,000, and it gives us now two complete sets of battery-operated tools. They can cut the high tensile strength metals on the cars, and they're just, they're just a great tool. Kudos to Littleton Light stepping up and helping us out with public safety, and as well as the Governor for putting that grant forward for departments around Massachusetts to get.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that explanation of what it can be used for as well. Any questions? Understand a motion.
I move that the Select Board vote to accept the firefighter safety grant award from the Department of Fire Services in the amount of $12,325 to purchase a battery-operated hydraulic spreader, and the Community Development Grant from Littleton Electric Light and Water Department in the amount of $11,450.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Great. Thanks very much, Chief.
Thank you.
I'll stick around for the carriage for the...
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a, an annual town appointment for the Personnel Board, and I see the Chair of the Personnel Board here and the candidate. Before we go forward with this, I just want to give an apology to the Chair of the Personnel Board. At our last Monday night meeting, we were doing a hybrid, which is one of the drawbacks to hybrid, it certainly afforded us the ability to meet during a crazy and difficult time, but during the hybrid, the Chair was not afforded an opportunity to speak. By the time I was notified that Anita Harding, the Chair of the Personnel Board, was, had her hand raised, we had already decided to move on with the subject matter, and so we did do that, and I have met with Anita and apologized to her personally, but I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that, give you a public apology, and I apologize for that, and...
Thank you.
You bet. Yeah, good.
Thank you very much.
You bet. So, Anthony, we've got the appointment?
I'll tee it up. So, Mr. Chairman, tonight is the Personnel Committee, as you indicated, this was a committee that Tom, by law, first established in 1977, had amendments in 1987, 2007, 2009, and 2010. There's one individual opening, and that's Bill Schmidt, and he's indicated that he would like to be reappointed. I know that there's two others that say 2021, one being Select Board Member Glavy, but I think, did we do that at the last board meeting?
I don't know.
We didn't do it yet.
But we didn't do it yet. So, and then Kathy Miller, I think, has to, I think Joe was looking at possibly they have to run an election, just go through the process for town employees. But other than that, tonight, you have before you Bill Schmidt for that position for a community member, and that has HR experience for that position.
Okay, great.
Chairman?
Please.
Yeah, I think we'd raised the issue, or I had raised the issue, I think others had spoke to it as well, that since our intention has been stated since last fall that we're going to go forward with changes to the bylaw that would make our committee that we all, I and three of the members in the audience serve on, go away, whether or not that would be affected by making any reappointments, including the Select Board's appointment to the Board, and we've been reassured by counsel that that's not the case. So, Bill served for many years here, I've known Bill for decades, serves a distinction on the Board, Personnel Board, and while I hope it goes away with the reintroduction of that article in the fall, there's a, you know, there's no reason we shouldn't keep Bill on board for as long as the Personnel Committee continues. So, with that, I'd move that the Select Board vote to appoint William Schmidt to a term in the Personnel Board for a term expiring June 30, 2024, for a three-year term.
Second.
It's moved and seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. You do need to get reappointed by the town clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
You bet. You bet. Okay, so next up, we're on to public input and members' updates. Just, we do have the podium here with the microphone and with the number of folks... Just, we do have the podium here with the microphone, and with the number of folks being at home, the microphones don't always pick up what folks are saying from the audience, so I just, on our agenda, we do have some italicized rules of engagement, if you will. And, you know, always, we want to, we want to make sure that people are respectful and whatnot, but during public input, we just ask that folks come to the microphone, state their name, their address, and keep their comments germane and brief. And any comments that you do make from the microphone, please make those through the Chair, just the process that we want to make sure that we follow. We do have kind of a time limit that we're looking to kind of impose, and we're looking to have comments be limited to two minutes per speaker.
Or less.
Or less. You don't have to use two minutes. And we want to try to keep the public input portion to about a 10-minute span. So if anybody would like to be heard, just raise your hand, and I'll recognize you, and you can come to the microphone and say your piece. Ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Clyde, 12-1 on Let's Er trail. As my term, I resigned from the Personnel Board, but I would just like to make one comment about Personnel Board, that they are working very hard in trying to do what the Select Board would like. But the comment that was made on June 21st, I believe was last meeting, that the Personnel Board doesn't want to see the moving forward to have a strong HR department only, that they're, they're trying to hold back and not have a professional, put in quotes, professional, strong HR department is not true. They want, when I was on the Board, which only ended a few weeks ago, definitely want a strong HR department, don't want to get in the way, but want to be a resource to help them out. So would be grateful and appreciated if people wouldn't be so negative towards this Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard under public input? Okay. Stayed under, under 10 minutes. We just picked up some time. Member updates. Anybody want to lead us off?
I'll go first. I first want to also issue a public apology. Last, at the last meeting, I, there were some errors in the control sheets, and I mentioned Diane Corry's name, which was unfair. I should know better than to say something like that without checking, and I want to apologize publicly to her because she was not responsible for any of those errors. Secondly, I did attend a COA meeting, and I, but we can talk about that during the senior center update later today, and that's all I have.
Okay, great. Glady, you have a name?
Yeah, two things. Just, I'm going through my emails, trying to remember what the proper terminology was. I'll defer to Mr. Rinaldi. Wednesday night, or actually, Joe, you might be a little more on top of this. We have a forum, which I think the public can attend either in person at the fire station, or can they do it virtually as well?
Yes.
Okay, and it has to do with a study that was conducted on the impact of COVID-19 period of time on local business community, correct? Do you want, you want to give a little more elaboration on that? I apologize for not.
Sure. Thank you, Paul. So on, on Wednesday at the community room at the fire station, starting at 6:30, there's going to be a presentation from the Beta Group on the impact COVID-19 had on local businesses around the town common. We had applied for funding through the local rapid response program that DHCD ran, and this consultant was paired with us. They did a bunch of surveys of local businesses to identify what the impacts of COVID-19 was on their, their, their business, also some of the constraints that they're feeling because of the impacts from COVID. So those initial findings are going to be presented, along with some draft recommendations. They're looking for public feedback. You can attend in person or by Zoom. That information is on our Facebook page. It's also on our town website. So we will, you know, make sure that, that this information gets out to the public and welcome the public's comments as we are looking to strengthening the, the businesses within the town of Littleton and help them recover from the impacts of COVID-19.
Just under the two-minute limit. You just made it.
Is there a running back?
I have the over.
The other, I know I mentioned this a few weeks ago, but since the event's happening this Sunday, it's worth repeating. I think, I think space limitations make this not a public event, but an invitation event, but our own local VFW commander at Littleton Post, 6556, is that what it is?
6546.
Yeah, okay, 6546. Doug Wood is being installed as the State Commander of the Massachusetts VFW. So congratulations again, Littleton VFW Post and Doug Wood, Commander Doug Wood.
State Commander, right. Nice. Ms. Napoli?
Mr. DeCoste. So two things I want to mention. There is going to be, Jocelyn Graham of Littleton is putting together a group that's putting together a event called Littleton Goes Purple. It's to raise awareness about Alzheimer's. And she is hoping that Littleton local businesses will engage by, you know, selling purple cocktails or putting some signage or information at their businesses. I think there's going to be T-shirts made and sold. There's going to be signs around town, so that they're really hoping that the whole community will come together to support that event. I'm going to see if Jocelyn will come to the next Select Board meeting to talk more about it, but that event is the week of August 1st through August 7th. If anyone wants to register a team, they can do that at, they can contact Autumn Hopley at ALZ.org. And I know Jocelyn's going to put together a Facebook page, and there'll be some more information about that locally, but I thought that was a pretty cool event, something new for the town of Littleton to do, to paint the town purple and support Alzheimer's, which we all know has affected probably everybody in this room in one way or another. So I'm excited about seeing some residents come forward with something like that. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the Littleton Station Area Committee has been reconvened. We're looking to meet, hopefully have our first meeting on July 19th. We're going to try to meet opposite Select Board meetings. Those meetings will be televised. Anyone that wishes to come to those meetings to talk to Littleton Station Area Committee is welcome to do so right here in Room 103. So there'll be more information posted about the agenda and those meetings going forward. But I just wanted to let the public know that those discussions are going to be ongoing in anticipation of bringing forward the 40-hour zoning bylaw at the town meeting in the fall.
Great. I had a couple I just wanted to mention. I mean, we sung the praises of our public safety folks, but I also want to sing the praises of our, the folks that take care of our public grounds. For Memorial Day, it always looks great, and 4th of July, kind of when I noticed, maybe it did, maybe it didn't, but the Highway Department, DBW, I guess, we made that change, did a great job of cleaning up the common and, you know, just, just all the areas where, you know, they're very much the forefront of the town. It just made me feel good to, you know, proud of the town, and seeing the common, you know, nicely cut with the flags up and that kind of thing, as well as the cemetery, so TC a little bit of a shout there as well. Also, very excited about, and I don't want to steal your thunder from Personnel later, but very excited that the Board has come to agreement with a couple of Personnel folks, and just to kind of echo some of what Ms. Clyde said relative to the professionals over the HR Department, the individual that we have coming in. I know that we sung the praises of the person that's coming in as our Finance Director and Town Accountant, but the HR Director that's coming in is, I think, going to be a rock star for the employees and for the residents and for, certainly for the administration. So I'm very excited about where, where we're at. So that wraps up our public input and members' updates. Next, we've got some discussion relative to the right of first refusal for Chapterland, which is located at 85 Whitcomb Ave.
And as I mentioned the last time this topic came up, I don't have a conflict directly with this property, but out of overabundance, I do have an item before the Conservation Commission, and they were recommending it. I'm going to recuse this time around. I'll just step out of the room. I'll be local enough that I come back in when it's over.
We'll send Mr. Mullen after you. Thanks for that, Paul. Do you or Joe want to kind of take the lead on this, or, we had some discussion at our last meeting about the property, where it's located. It is located, is surrounded by residential properties on either side of it. There are large swaths of land around it that are already protected. There was some discussion from Conservation Commission, who they felt as though it was a piece of property that would be worth conserving, but we did get some information from the Water Department as well to try to validate the comments that were made at our last meeting relative to the location of the property and its proximity to, oh, well, frankly, so it's a zone 2 property. And we do have, I don't know if that's, if we have it, I know we have it, but I'm not sure if it's available to the public at this point, but I don't know if either of you want to.
Yeah, it's in the packet, Mr. Chairman, and that was the direction that the Board gave Joe and I, was to get that in writing from the Water Department. So, you know, I'll turn it over to Joe, because Joe had had this discussion with Corey Godfrey and has that memo that he can explain for the public. It is included in your packet, so it is a public document. It is in the packet, Joe?
That was received today, so it was emailed separately.
Okay, so we'll add that to the packet. It will be amended. Okay, good, sure. That was my understanding.
Right, so.
No time limit, Joe.
We have seven minutes, Joe, right?
Former town planners can take up the rest of the evening just talking about one topic, especially when it comes to land protection. So per the Board's last regular meeting, there was the desire to get a follow-up opinion from Light and Water, Water Department as far as the value of the land. And per the, the letter that was provided to the Board today from LELWD, specifically Water Department, it does talk about the Water Department's value and trying to protect property around its wellheads within the Zone 1 and Zone 2. And, you know, as the, the Board can see on the, the map on the screens, with the yellow parcel for 85 Whitcomb Ave highlighted, there's a lot of parcels around there that also are not currently developed and, you know, may be future opportunities for, for purchase, acquisition, preservation by one or many, many means. So ultimately, within this letter, the Water Department did say, the property does have some conservation value over and above the aquifer protection interests that the water, that are the Water Department's priority. The fact that the one-acre parcel is contiguous to the 19-acre town-owned conservation land behind it increases the value as wildlife habitat. However, because the parcel is otherwise surrounded by residential land uses, there is no future potential for expanding the contiguous conservation even further. And that's where it identifies that to the north, you can see where there's additional open space that could be protected, and that there are future opportunities for trying to then make sure that you have a larger contiguous parcel. And that $200,000 going towards land purchase, focusing that on one acre versus opportunities in the future, you know, that gets raised as a question as far as is it the most cost-effective means of protecting what could be a, rather than just an individual parcel surrounded by two residential properties to the left and right, and then residential properties across the street, there could be the opportunity for, for larger open space protections if you look above and to the left and, and right on the, on the map. So that's essentially the, the opinion as far as the Water Department. You know, there is value, but is it a cost-effective way of actually protecting that one acre? There are, there are limits, just being within Zone 2, that for the development of the lot would also apply.
There was additional correspondence that Mr. McGarver, that I forwarded to the Board later this afternoon, that once I got it.
Right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board at this point?
I think my biggest concern is that if we're going to expend that amount of money, in my viewpoint, if we could use that same money for a lodge apostle, even if it's in this area or some other area, I'd much rather do that than take a one-acre building lot. That's already been basically set aside as a building lot. I'm more, I'm more concerned about the lodge apostles and the chances that we have of obtaining those in the future. That's where I'd like to see, that's my personal opinion, that's where I'd like to see our monies go, if possible. If those become available, we should jump all over those.
So the opportunity cost, if we spend $200,000, which is going to hamstring us a little bit if those opportunities do come up.
I, that property, and I still think, one of our goals, I think it's been said before, that we should be talking to lodge landowners or people who have land, find out what, what their intention is in the future, so we have an idea what's coming down the road, and this could be coming down the road.
I share that very similar.
I do as well. I think that's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Well, do we take action? Is there a consensus of the Board ready for a motion? I think so, yeah. I mean, I think we've got all the, kind of collected all the information with other Conservation Commission. We've received some information today as well, and I think we've got all the input we need.
I move that the Select Board vote not to exercise the town's right of first refusal under MGL Chapter 61A to acquire a 1.1-acre property at 85 Whitcomb Avenue, assessors MAP R12-30-14, for a bona fide offer of $200,000, and to execute a notice of non-exercise confirming said vote.
Second.
Oh, now I got to pick, huh? Motion's been made and seconded by Ms. Napoli. Sorry, Joe. All those in favor have signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, 4-0. Okay. Mr. McGarver?
Aye.
Is it relative to the Chapterland?
Yes.
We've already taken a vote on it. Thank you.
It's a continuation.
It's like trusty from the People's Court.
I had to guess what I was wondering is, do you have plans to bring people together to prioritize? You already know what's coming down the line.
Yeah, we have the public input section, and I appreciate, we received your letter, and it's definitely part of our informed decision. That's, that's the decision we made. But, yeah, we, that's, one of our goals is relative to conservation and preservation.
So I guess what I was asking is, do you have plans to convene people together who have the interest here that could prioritize? The answer is you requested on your meeting on June 21st.
It's not a bad idea in the future.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. We've taken a advisement, but it is one of our goals, and we've got different plans, different people that get kind of championed or assigned to, to our goals. But to answer your question specifically, we don't have a specific plan right now, but there's something that we have looked at.
Last meeting, we're asked if the Conservation Club would be involved. We said we wouldn't, and then I sent a letter including all the stakeholders that can make it happen.
We just haven't set our goals yet, Mr. McGarver, but we're definitely going to have that discussion in the near future when we go through that process.
Thank you. All right. I believe we're up to 8A. Application for amendment to an annual entertainment license?
We have a public hearing at 7:30, Mr. Shade. That's correct.
Okay, so.
Two topics.
Do the minutes.
Yeah, we got a few minutes. If you want to prove the minutes.
We're jumping ahead to. That clock is a little faster. So, item 10, everybody have an opportunity to take a look. Any questions, concerns about the minutes?
I reviewed them. They seem all correct to me.
Any discussion about the minutes? Entertainer motion to approve them?
Now you're going to make me scroll to the end. I vote that we approve the minutes of June 21st, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, five zero. Thank you very much for that quick pivot. All right, so what do we have for an official time?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, huh?
TAs, TA update stuff.
Anything? How many town lines is going to be a little, how about, yeah, the Town Common use?
Sure. Joe's working on that, Joe, do you want to?
Was item 9D?
Joe, was the applicant planning on being here?
I don't, I don't know if he was planning on being here, but we can review if the application material is, is very similar to what the Board had also considered and approved last year. So, Littleton resident Sanjay Gouda, with the Indian Association of Greater Boston, had submitted an application to use the Town Common to hold a India Day celebration. This is coming up to be the 75th Independence Day for India, and it's part of a celebration that the Indian community does over a two-week period, and they've asked to use the Common on August 7th from, with the ceremony occurring 10:00 AM to 10:30. Use of the Common would include arriving at 8 o'clock in the morning, setting up two 16-foot temporary flag poles, ceremony 10:30 ending at, at 10, ending at 10:30, and then keeping the flags up, and then tearing down the flags at 6:00 PM, so they'd be done within the course of that day. Similar to last year, they did ask about the town providing a proclamation. There's a draft within the Board's packet, again, similar to last year. And if available, they also appreciated the willingness of, of any town officials or Board members who may be able to attend. They did extend an invitation to our local delegation.
Thanks, Joe.
I did attend this last year and read the proclamation. This year I will brush up on my pronunciation of Indian names prior to that, but I will say that it was a, it was actually a lovely ceremony, it was a beautiful day, and I believe that Mr. Gouda said that this was the first time they had done this large-scale, like, outside of Boston, celebration. Usually it's a, one big celebration in Boston, but because of COVID, they moved out to all these outlawing towns, so perhaps they're going to do that from now on, because it was, it was great, and it was a pretty good attendance.
You just volunteer?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go, yeah.
I should have, I should have added that the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and DPW Director did review the application and said they had no comments, they also had no issues with last year's event.
Could you, Joe, or Anthony, remind us again closer to the 7th, when the date comes up at the events there?
Absolutely. The only, the only question I had, and I don't know if it's a building inspector or the, for Fire Chief, or relative to two 16-foot temporary flag poles going up, I just, as long as they're comfortable with them, they're the same flag poles that we used last year, and we don't have any concerns from a liability standpoint, is there, do we, when someone uses the Common, do we ask that they post some sort of rider or liability or anything for insurance for?
Yeah, that is something that we did require for use for some of the groups asking to use it for an event, where there is something a little bit more significant going on. These were, were basically just being attached or secured by way of spikes in the ground, so it's not something that they're digging down, doing any sort of damage, so it is something that, again, last year was, was reviewed, and they're, they're just following the same steps they did last year.
If they follow the same thing last year, and the building commissioner and Fire Chief are okay with it, just from a public safety standpoint, then I'm, I'm comfortable with it. Matthew has volunteered to read the proclamation.
Are you ready for a motion?
I think we are, yes, thank you.
I move that the Board vote to approve the application of Sanjay Gouda on behalf of the Indian Association of Greater Boston for use of Littleton Common on August 7th between the hours of 10:00 AM and 10:30 AM for India Day, and in accordance with the conditions for use of Littleton Common.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Knox, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, five zero. Great, thank you very much, I think we have a public hearing for 7:30 for salute. And if we could.
I'm looking for the wording, give me one second here. Do I have to read the whole notice?
We have to read the note, yeah, I got it here.
Okay. Is it first, that's.
Salute is the first one?
Just give me one second.
It's up here.
Oh, yeah, but I have to turn around to do that for him. You got it? Okay, here we go. "The Littleton Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July 12th, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Littleton Town Offices, Room 137 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. Room 103, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass., to act on a request submitted by Salute owner-manager Deborah Carlson for amendments to his annual entertainment license and a one-day special entertainment license under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 183A, and a one-day extension to its patio premises pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 19 of the Acts of 2021, for Salute located at 1204 Constitution Avenue, Littleton, Mass. Zoom information will be included in the agenda, which will be posted no later than 48 hours prior to the hearing. Annual entertainment license amendments include allowing acoustic and small amplified bands indoors Friday and Saturday from 7:30 PM to 11:00 PM, and for special holiday events during approved operating hours. Comedy shows indoors by admission fee Fridays and Saturdays from 7:30 PM to 11:00 PM. One-day special outdoor entertainment event allowing a five-piece amplified band outdoors for a special event on the approved patio, August 7th, 2021, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. One-day patio premises extension for special event, August 7th, 2021. A copy of the application may be seen at the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, Room 306 at 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to selectboard@littletonmass.org, or the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass., 01460, by noon on Wednesday, July 7th, 2021, or in person at the hearing. Littleton Select Board, Charles Decost, Chair."
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, just to inform you, we had no comments that arrived in our office relative to this. And the entertainment license is currently that Salute has, they do have acoustical, so this is just adding the amplification aspect of that license.
Thank you for the clarification. If you want to come forward? If you want to come up, I mean, just, just, just in case any questions, I mean, I don't know if any of the Board members have any questions, but. Yeah. Pretty much what it says is what you're looking to do, right?
That's what, yeah, it's our one-year anniversary, and we didn't have any grand opening because of COVID, so we wanted to do something a little bit, a little spectacular, not too much.
Lowercase spectacular?
Lowercase spectacular, yeah.
All right, actually, if you could just introduce yourself, just for.
Oh, sorry, I'm Deborah Carlson, owner of Salute.
Great. Any questions of Ms. Carlson?
Not personally, but I'd be interested to hear what the public safety folks had, and if there's any notice about us or residents that have any input.
Absolutely. I, I guess, if anybody has any public, any, any input, any Department heads?
From an inspection first perspective, when they were building it out, I got to do the, all the inspections, a few things were added for emergency lighting and exit signs, they lowered them down because the windows were so high, they actually put them on extension poles, they were great to deal with, and happy to see them have the celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Congratulations on your one-year anniversary.
Thank you, thank you.
No issues, Mr. Chair, she's got a crowd manager's certification for the events that she wished to hold in the building, if you want to say.
Please. No comments, no wishes, congratulations.
Thanks.
Anybody in the public wish to be here, this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions or comments, no? Hearing ended, understand a motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Motion related to Mr. Nordhaus and seconded by Mr. Glavy to close the hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is closed, I mean, the hearing is closed, any further discussion from the Board? Understand a motion?
I move that the Select Board vote to approve the applications submitted by owner-manager Deborah Carlson for amendments to its annual entertainment license under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 183A, for Salute located at 1204 Constitution Avenue, Littleton, Mass. Amendments include allowing acoustic and small amplified bands indoors on Fridays and Saturdays from 7:30 PM to 11:00 PM, and for special holiday events during approved operating hours, and comedy shows indoors by admission fee Fridays and Saturdays from 7:30 PM to 11:00 PM.
Thank you.
Second.
It's moved and seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have another public hearing, are we, is the time certain, or is it at 7:30?
Yeah, 7:30 to open both.
It's Madison?
No. Yeah, we just.
Do you have that one?
This is the second one for Salute, or this is the?
This is the one for Stevie's.
Got it, yeah, I have that one.
Wait, don't we have two, three for Salute?
Yeah, the information we got.
Yeah, we've got a.
We have three for Stevie's.
We had, we had.
We got an application for a one-day entertainment license?
The motion included all those, right?
Oh, was that all?
All right, so it's changed from what we got, then, because we, we had received individual motions for each of them.
Right, so I have individual motions for Stevie's.
Well, well, this is for Salute.
So I do, I have two more for Salute in the, in the control sheets.
Yeah.
Can we go back and look at the motion that Matthew just read? Maybe it does include all that, we just want to make sure we voted everything we're supposed to have voted for you, that's all.
Yeah, there's an application for a one-day entertainment.
Yeah, so there's A2.
All right, so Matthew, maybe that.
8A1, 8H2.
So we want to vote on each of these?
Yes. Just, just for the record, the, the hearing notice you read didn't include all.
It was for all three of them, right? So we just need to move, okay.
Yeah, so there's two more motions.
So I move that the Select Board vote to approve the applications submitted by owner-manager Deborah Carlson for a one-day, August 7th, 2021, special outdoor entertainment license under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 183A, for Salute located at 1204 Constitution Avenue, Littleton, Mass. The proposed outdoor entertainment includes a five-piece amplified band on the approved patio from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, August 7th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Ms. Napoli, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
I move that the Select Board vote to approve the request submitted by owner-manager Deborah Carlson for a one-day, August 7th, 2021, patio premise extension pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 19 of the Acts of 2021, for Salute Inc., located at 1204 Constitution Avenue, Littleton, Mass.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Now you're okay.
Thank you.
We hope to see you there.
Excellent.
After all that, I'm going to need a drink.
A purple one.
Yes.
All right, I like the diagram, all right, let me just fly through here, I think that was on me, I apologize. Next up, we have Stevie's Eatery, Stevie's in the back here, so let, let's just open the hearing, Mr. Clark, if you could read the, the public notice?
Littleton Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July 12th, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Littleton Town Offices, Room 103, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass., to act on requests submitted by owner Steven Dembrow for three licenses, a Common Victular License under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 2, a one-day entertainment license under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 183A, and a one-day all liquor license, Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, for Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering on behalf of Fida Neighbor Inc., located at 1 Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass. Zoom information will be included in the agenda, which will be posted no later than 48 hours prior to the hearing. The license applications include common Victular License for 7:30 AM to 2:30 PM daily, and special events from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. One-day entertainment license on behalf of Fida Neighbor Inc. on Saturday, July 31st, 2021, for the hours of 2:00 to 10:00 PM. Proposed entertainment includes the singing and acoustic guitar duo, a harmonica player, DJ, and amplification system. One-day all alcohol liquor pouring license on behalf of Fida Neighbor Inc., a 501(c)(3) on Saturday, July 31st, 2021, for the hours of 4:00 to 9:00 PM. A copy of the application may be seen at the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, Room 306 at 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to selectboard@littletonmass.org, or to the Select Board Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass., 01460, by noon on Wednesday, July 7th, 2021, or in person at the hearing. Littleton Select Board, Charles Decost, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So the hearing is open, Mr. Dembrow, if you'd like to come up, that'd be great.
Once again, Mr. Chair, we did not receive any comments.
Thank you.
Oh.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We did open, yes.
Just a little information, my name is Steve Dembrow, I own Stevie's Eatery, and I currently have a location in Hudson. This will be my second location, working with JebSCO, they asked me to come in and take over their kitchen and cafeteria facilities. And the goal, long-term, I have a contract for 10 years, so the goal is to not only just open a location, but to play a major role in the community, like I have within Hudson and Marlboro with the Fida Neighbor Program, which is a 501(c)(3) we started once COVID hit. When we started that five, when we started the process with the Fida Neighbor Program, since we started in May, March 18th, we have given away over 20,000 meals for $5 or less or free. And we currently have eight families that we take care of weekly that have no way to produce food for themselves. Ideally, that's what we're looking to bring here as well with the Fida Neighbor Program. The biggest thing that we're looking for within, with the Fida Neighbor Program is to back up all of the local social clubs, churches that are currently doing something. There's always that one day that gets missed, where some people just don't know where that's coming from, as well as in the event that we have anybody who has an emergency issue and that it, something major happened, fire, whatever the case may be, but we're able to step up and provide the meals for them, so that the following morning, they can get to work on fixing and creating a solution for themselves to move forward, and that's what we do.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the Board of Mr. Dembrow?
Nope, just same as before, the public safety and public at large.
Okay.
No, it's, it's, I had some questions, he took one, took care of one. Diane is relentless, thank God for Diane.
Speaking of which, yeah, she, she was instrumental in all of this, and she really did a great job. I mean, we had three things going on at once, and she was, she just compartmentalized it all, just made it easier for us to get it all done.
Great, so it's good to hear.
Yes.
I issued the certificate of occupancy back in June 7th, we did a calculation for the number of occupants that could be in the building, it's now posted for his assembly space inside and out, so.
Great, thank you.
I did, yeah.
I think from the Police Department, in regards to the application for a one-day all alcohol, we recommend, not requiring, but recommending possibly the hiring of a police officer for detail for that event.
I spoke with the chief on that, and he sent me a contact person to take care of that.
Okay.
My intention is to come back into Littleton tomorrow, go to the Police Department and take care of that.
Okay, excellent.
Appreciate that, thanks. Okay, any?
There's three, three motions.
Three motions, I got it, yes.
First, we're going to close the hearing, then.
Yeah, I don't see any of the public, unless it's straight and brown. All right, motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Matthew and seconded by Paul, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The hearing is now closed, any further deliberation? All right, we have three motions. 8B1.
Here we go. "I move that the Select Board vote to approve the applications submitted by owner-manager Steven Dembrow for a common Victular License under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 2, for Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering located at 1 Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass. Operating hours are 7:30 AM to 2:30 PM daily, and special events from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays."
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded by Mr. Glavy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, great.
"I move that the Select Board vote to approve the applications submitted by owner-manager Steven Dembrow for a one-day entertainment license for an event, July 31st, 2021, alcohol sales during the hours of 2:00 PM." alcohol sales during the hours of 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 138, 183A, held at Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering located at 1 Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass, for the benefit of Fida Neighbor Inc.
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, great.
That was the alcohol?
That was the all alcohol for the one day.
Okay, so that, the hours for that alcohol was from 4:00 to 9:00?
That's the entertainment.
Let me check. That was the?
We said two to 10.
That was the entertainment license.
The entertainment was from 2:00 to 10:00.
Two to 10:00.
I'm sorry, the alcohol should be from 4:00 to 9:00.
Here comes the alcohol.
Okay, good, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Move that the select board vote to approve the application submitted by owner-manager, wait for it, Steven Dembrow, for a special one-day all-alcohol pouring license for an event, July 31st, 2021, alcohol sales during the hours of 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. under Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 14, for the benefit of Fida Neighbor, held at Stevie's Backroad Cafe and Catering located at 1 Monarch Drive, Littleton, Mass.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And we look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for stepping up and doing this.
This is, uh, great stuff.
And if anybody wants to join us, please be more than welcome on the 31st.
That's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Somebody remind us of that when those dates get closer?
Sure thing.
Um, I do have, I do have one question, though. The, the notices read that there's Zoom information will be available, but you can't comment on this public hearing through Zoom.
So, yes, we, we did talk with, uh, council about that and, and because it was the option, uh, we're covered as far as having the meeting here. There was an opportunity for the, for the public to submit comments in writing in advance, too, so.
Okay.
At the time when we did this over a month ago, things have just changed since then.
Should we change our language, though, going forward?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. The public hearings will just be back in 103.
Okay, moving along to, um, 7:50. Look at us. Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator. Actually, no, I'm sorry, we have 9A, right?
Yep.
9A, yes.
Yeah, so it's on the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, which is, um, update on the center.
The center. So, Mr. Chair, yes, this is the first of four items, uh, for the TAA TA update. Before us tonight is, is, uh, Drayton and Brian from LLB that we're gonna go through a little brief, um, PowerPoint on where we, how far we've come from the study to what is, uh, to town meeting and, and moving forward with, ending with the timeline. And then we're looking for the board to approve the contract with LLB so we can get started on it, so. Gentlemen, why not? Just let me know when you wanna switch slides, Drayton and.
I was just here to say, thank you very much. We're great to be back in Littleton.
It's great to be back in Littleton.
In person, right?
And we're, we're very excited about getting, getting started again and continuing with, with the town on this project, so. As, as the Town Administrator said, we're gonna do a very quick recap. I'm gonna let Brian take care of this 'cause he was boots-on-the-ground, so.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you, Ben. As you can see up on the screen, uh, we started off with interviews of, uh, critical team members in all departments throughout, uh, Littleton, uh, to study the fit analysis for Shattuck Street, uh, as well as 255 Great Road. That previous slide showed the.
Sorry.
Yep, that's okay. The, uh, the most dark color was the, uh, current square footage requirement, uh, existing. Uh, the lighter color on the extension is the proposed for each of the departments, as well as the lightest color showing, uh, future growth. And you can see really that Elder and Human Services, uh, was one of the two programs that really, um, came out of this process, uh, needing our, our further study. So we really focused, next slide, please, on the 37 Shattuck Street property building that we're in right now and you're all familiar with, as well as 255 Great Road. Next slide. Uh, 255 Great Road is the property located, um, it's a two-story building. It used to be a, a bank and commercial property. Next slide. A part of our, uh, process, uh, in, in addition to fit studies was exterior envelope review. And, uh, out of that exterior envelope review, uh, a number of concerns were identified, documented, logged, and we put some cost analysis associated with that, um, to, uh, fully understand if the building was, uh, worth the investment and, uh, for a program. And it was, uh, decided that it was not. Next slide. Uh, we also looked at Shattuck Street for a number of the different, um, programmatic elements that you saw on the, on the first slide. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, likewise, um, I'm sure you're mostly familiar with walking in and around this building. Uh, there are, um, some envelope concerns due to the age and the vintages of the building, uh, throughout, uh, maintenance program, either deferred or, um, or yet to be understood. Next slide, please. The, the building overall was in, in decent shape, um, but the inadequacies and inadequacies and inefficiencies came within the, um, kind of compartmentalized fitting of program into older sizes. It was inefficient, uh, and created a series of ADA concerns and bottlenecks throughout. So, uh, we were asked to study another building, uh, next slide, and really focus on Elder and Human Services. And the next building that we studied was, uh, King Street. Uh, and, yep, 36 King Street. It was a multi-level building. It, uh, had a, a nice site presence. The building itself for the program, um, started to prove to be a too-fit, uh, too-big of a building for the fit. Um, there were also, uh, a number of inefficiencies, I think in the next slide we'll identify. Oh, this is the existing photo, sorry. Infrastructure, um, that we needed to upgrade in order for the use group to, um, be satisfied. The square footage was larger than required. Uh, the levels were difficult from a staffing perspective that we found out to, uh, actually operate. And those were a few of the items that came up on that property. We, uh, during the initial study at Shattuck Street, it came full circle. Uh, we actually began to look at, uh, a standalone EHS building, which if you wanna, uh, advance the slide, back on Shattuck Street, um, in response to the sighting of what is going on across the parking lot with the library. And really, uh, uh, you know, enhancing the campus feel that we heard, uh, during our initial, repeatedly through all of our interview processes that we had, the takeaways were really the campus feel. They liked the location, uh, it was really ideal, and there was a, a great, uh, sense of, um, development that could occur and exist within these, within this site if the, if the standalone building were sighted on the property. So we took a look at a bunch of different options, um, for a standalone building and really focused the energy at the back edge, um, to have a architectural language in response to the library. And this is just a conceptual floor plan that we put together, uh, based on the, uh, space needs assessment that we did with the key players and, um, developed that. And, uh, as we move forward through, uh, the next phases, uh, things will get pushed, pulled, uh, crossed out, added to, uh, to, to truly work, uh, in its best fashion. And this is just kind of a quick rendering on the right versus the photograph, um, drone on the left and a closer-up, uh, rendering of what it might look like from a shape perspective. Again, we're taking cues from the building, uh, of the library. It won't, will not book match it, it won't, you know, won't match it entirely, but the, the volumes at least will pay respect to it and materials, too.
Lot of gable-ing on the roof. Does that, uh, is that a trend these days or is that just because it's, uh?
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it again.
No, I mean, I don't mind it.
Yeah, no, I know.
I notice it's different, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. There are a lot of gables, there are a lot of things put together. That was our early, early response to it, so.
That was taken into consideration while we, what we.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We were understanding the volumes that were going on, the fact that you have a two-story drop-off on the backside in response to that hill. Um, it is a public building, so, you know, uh, there's a certain scale that goes along with that, that type of municipal building, um, so.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Drayton, maybe talk to the schedule?
Sure. Um, as, uh, as Brian mentioned, the, the, the previous, um, previous diagram was really just that. A diagram that, that was done relatively quickly, uh, in order to sort of flush out, finish out that space needs study as to, as to what, what could be. So now what we'd like to do is enter into the next phase of schematic design. And that's what you have, uh, in front of you. In terms of, uh, doing a deeper dive into programmatic requirements for the building, um, taking, uh, a look at the, the land specifically with a geotechnical, uh, analysis, as well as a final site survey for that portion of Shattuck Street so that the design could be developed to really fit into the, into the, into the site the way it needs to be. Again, working with, um, working with the committee and the administration of the EHS to finalize and, um, and develop and finalize the program requirements for the building. And really to take a look at the design in, in relation to the campus feel that we are on at, at this particular site. The, you know, the, this building, um, was built quite a while ago. The library, of course, is brand-new. The library does, to a certain extent, set the tone of sort of what is gonna be going on. Our intention is certainly not necessarily to, to match it exactly, but to certainly work with it so that it does feel like a campus. It does feel like, uh, sort of a unified whole. So in terms of the schedule, we, uh, are looking at, starting as soon as possible or continuing as soon as possible with a, um, uh, schematic that, design that goes, goes for basically about four months, uh, August, September, October, um, and a little bit into November. At that point, we'll have a final schematic design cost estimate. And that's a cost estimate that will, will be presented to sort of, uh, as a, as a total project cost estimate, looking forward, uh, to establish that for the final project. After that gets approved, we would propose going into design development in about another, uh, three months, and then construction documents. Our goal with this particular schedule was trying to, uh, get a final construction cost, uh, construction documents cost estimate, uh, that could be presented at spring town meeting. And that, that would be the number that the town would be, um, uh, voting on to construct the building. There'd be another cost estimate during design development and, and again, this third cost estimate during, uh, construction documents. We do this so that, you know, we're, we always have a good handle on how much this costs. Of course, as I, as I mentioned, this sort of first phase sort of establishes that. But these benchmarks give us, give us checks at each stage as we're going forward. The schedule is a little bit more detailed in that, you know, we'd, would anticipate that it certainly would be a pre-qualified list of bidders. Um, the sub-bidders and general bidders would be vetted during that construction documents phase so that if approved at town meeting, it could go right into construction as soon as possible after that. Because we're trying to, you know, time is money and we're always trying to get, uh, things, things built, uh, in, in efficient and expedient but responsible manner, so. I think if we have any, we're here to answer any questions and.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No.
I have one. Um, if you, can you give me any sense, um, historically of the variability between the different cost estimates as you progress along the design? In other words, do you know that, is there some average amount that changes? Are you, you know, over, under?
No, uh, well, our goal is to really use it as a check. So this first phase, this schematic design phase, um, will give us all that benchmark. And the, there will inevitably be sticker shock. You know, we, personally and professionally, everything costs more than you think it's gonna cost. But it's really based upon, um, your needs and, and, and requirements. So once everybody understands that it's really, it's not, it's not pie in the sky, it's not this long wish list of, of, of gold-plated fixtures. It's really based upon the, the needs, uh, of the town. But that gives us a point at the end of schematic design to say, yes, we're comfortable with that. Let's keep that going forward. In which case, that's, that's, that's the benchmark and we design to, to that benchmark. So the next two are really, hopefully, just gut checks unless there's something that really changes within the, within the construction market. But then again, at that point, if, if people are really uncomfortable with the number, it also gives us a, a time to sort of have another, um, have another sort of, uh, reckoning to say, okay, going forward into design development, we're gonna have to tighten up the use of materials or the building's gonna have to get a little bit smaller. Or maybe, um, maybe everything's great and we can add a little bit more space or, you know. But that, that first one is really the most critical one 'cause it sets the, sets the project.
Got it.
Gut check is the best way to put it. Any other questions from any members?
No, appreciate it and excited about it.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Looking forward to continuing to work together. All right, so we got the.
We're looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman, to execute that, uh, Second Amendment to the contract.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I, um, this is not related to the contract specifically, but I, I would like to talk a bit about the process of going forward with the, the Senior Center in general. We can do it now or, or not. Um, I'm, I'm okay either way. But ba- based on the meeting with the COA today, I think they're concerned about their involvement and I think that's a, that's a conversation that we should, we should really have, um, to make sure everyone is, uh, has appropriate opportunity to give input.
I think the two are related but not necessary.
I understand, yeah.
To be discussed right now. I think we can.
Yeah.
All right, and you did request this as, as a, uh, item on the agenda.
I, I am officially, I'm, I guess I am officially requesting, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. No, and I think that's, I think that's important to do, just make sure that we have the process and we have the, you know, the, these guys use the term stakeholders, which is exactly where it is. You know, just make sure that, um, we're moving forward.
I'm anxious to get that input, but I hate to have it without them here in the room, too.
Right, so I was gonna say, it's a great example of like, well, you know, we, we should make sure they're invited to this sort of meeting, right?
Were they aware of this topic item being on it? 'Cause we actually could be having it now if they were here for this update.
So they were aware of it, but I, I'm not sure that, like, I wonder if we should've invited them to this.
Okay.
Yeah, I did give an overview today at the meeting at 1:30, so, um.
I, I would propose that we take the motion so we can keep the project moving forward. Certainly relative to process, we can have those conversations and certainly have the right, the right folks in the room.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
All right. Um, are you ready for a motion?
Any other discussion? Yeah.
No, I think that's the best way.
Okay.
Good, thanks, Madison.
I move that the select board vote to sign Second Amendment to Contract for Services with Lerner Lads &amp; Bartels, Inc., for the Design and Construction Document Services for the Town Hall Senior Center project.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, 5-0. Thank you very much. And we have the special town meeting timeline.
Be personnel update.
Right, personnel update.
He's testing you, Anthony.
It's, uh.
Well, he's still getting the way ahead of schedule, which is cool.
See, I'm trying to push.
Great job. So you did. Thank you. Yeah, you did, uh, steal some of my thunder earlier, Mr. Chairman, but I'll go through it again. That's okay.
I was just excited.
I know you are, and as we all are. I think it's, it's, uh, really, it's, uh, shaping up for, uh, really, uh, I'm starting to call them shaping up for a really, uh, I'm starting to call them the dream team, uh, municipal government, so. But, um, the first one, I just, I, I don't wanna lose the first part of, of our hire was, uh, for the Department of Land Use and Buildings. Uh, we were looking for an office coordinator, administrative assistant. We went out, uh, there was a number of applicants, um, nineteen applicants, of which, had we conducted, I wasn't part of it.
Seven.
Seven interviews, and, um, lo and behold, the, the person that came out top was our very own, uh, Janet Fairchild. Well, Janet's been with us for three years and eight months. Uh, Janet was appointed by the Building Commissioner for that position. Um, Janet holds a bachelor's degree from Wheaton College. Just to recap for our, uh, viewing audience, uh, the next position that the board did on July 1st, uh, was for Finance Department. Alicia Numley Benjamin, the Finance Director Town Accountant, will be joining us on the 26th of July. Uh, Alicia comes to us from the city of Medford, where she's been employed for four years and 11 months. Prior to that, she was with the city of Gloucester, uh, for almost eight years. Uh, Alicia holds a bachelor's degree from Salem State University, as well as an MBA from Salem State University. On the 8th, uh, we appointed the Human Resources, uh, Director, Michelle Viberit. Michelle is coming to us from the town of Winchester, where she was there for a little over four years, and prior to that, as the HR Director and ADA Coordinator for the town of Winchester. Prior to that, uh, she was in the town of Lexington for five years, four months, various positions, but the, uh, position that led to her, uh, Human Resources career was in the Human Resource Department, uh, really being trained by what I consider one of the finest HR Directors.
Bless you.
In, in municipal government, D. Casey, who's now the Deputy Town Manager in North Andover. Uh, Michelle holds a bachelor's degree from Endicott University. And, uh, the other update I wanna just fill the board in is, this week, we're hoping to do the, um, the Executive Assistant, which we, we titled Assistant to the Town Administrator Select Board. Uh, we have a number of applicants that we're gonna be reviewing and hopefully bring them in this week. The following week, we're hoping to, uh, set up interviews for the Director of EHS. Uh, currently, right now, we have three applicants, um, uh, of which, uh, two have municipal experience, uh, so be interesting to see how that works out. Obviously, I think moving that, uh, forward, uh, as quickly as possible is gonna help us with the Senior Center project that we just heard, um, about, so I think that's really important. So we're trying to, the, the way that we advertise that was applications accepted till the position's filled. So that means if you're really interested, get your application in early, so, um, so to date, we've had three. Um, the only other thing I wanna bring to the board's attention is, in the meantime, when, um, an EHS, when, uh, Ashley leaves us, that, uh, I've, I've asked Nicole to step up in the interim position. Nicole filled in the last time, so Nicole has graciously, uh, said yes. So, she will be the interim EHS Director, uh, starting on the 25th of July, until we have our new EHS Director aboard. Uh, that's all the updates I have for Personnel. Happy to answer any questions?
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations to everyone, uh, Janet, Alicia, Michelle, um, you know, we've got a great team in place, and it's, it's exciting. It's, it's, uh, it's nice to see folks that are excited to come join our team, and, um, looking forward to where we can go from here. Yeah, thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Joe, for your work input as well.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for your support.
Yeah, very much team effort.
Yes. Um, and Cindy, we'll get back to you when we'll know for interviews, so if you're available. If Cindy's not, and somebody else wants to step up, step on for...
EHS interviews.
EHS as well, um, as well as the Executive Assistant position. Happy to have a part of the board.
I would be happy to interview for the EHS position.
Okay.
I mean, not to be...
Oh, I, I, jeez, I thought we were gonna hire you right tonight.
Three jobs.
I thought he was saying he wanted to be the Director.
[laughing]
Thank you, thank you, Matthew, so I'll get back to you on that.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, Mr. Chair, is, um, believe it or not, Joe and I cringed, but we have to start thinking about special town meeting, even though we just got done with, uh, our annual town meeting.
Right.
So, um, there's a timeline. Um, we're looking at October 25th for the date of special town, special town meeting. We'd be back at, uh, the middle school and the gym. Uh, if, if that's the case, the timeline is attached and it's in your agenda. It's, as we looked at it, we were scratching our heads, saying, jeez, we're already really tight, because we'll be, next meeting, you'll be actually opening the warrant and then closing it in some point in September. So, uh, if it's to the board's satisfaction, that's the direction you'd like to go, then we'd be looking for, um, a motion tonight to set the date for special town meeting, and then revisit it the next meeting to open the warrant.
25th, huh?
25th, yes.
That, that timeline, was it in our pack? Was it? I didn't see it. Is it?
There it is.
Anthony, do you wanna give us a surprise?
Okay. Um, oh, we have to...
Hey, am I, oh, yeah, okay. We need to copy this and then send it...
I'm fine with this, but for the reasons you just stated, um, we need to be reminded, and all the departments need to be reminded, especially given the time of year people are off on vacations, you know, repeatedly until deadlines close, and if anybody's intending something for the fall, you know, including us, we need to do our, probably our, um, retreat, if that's gonna lead to anything that might be actionable that quick, you know, all of those things. I'm sure you, you're both thinking about that, but, you know, keep us, keep reminding us, please, is all I would say.
Yes, keep beating the drum.
Yeah, and, and Paul, I mean, you raised an excellent point. Um, so, in the control sheet for this item, I did identify that, um, uh, while there's no specific, um, uh, requirement for it, uh, that generally the town does schedule the closing of the warrant 45 days before the scheduling of town meeting. Um, to meet the 45 days, um, that would result in closing the warrant on, uh, Friday, September 10th. Um, in the draft schedule, have it closing on the 14th to give us actually one more meeting, one more week. Um, it doesn't result, I mean, that ends up being three days, but I was hoping that it was close enough that it actually gives us a little bit of breathing room. There's not much, um, but it, it gives us at least that opportunity for a Monday meeting to put articles on, uh, the warrant, and then have it close at noon the next day. So that's the, the only sort of, if you look at what the timeline...
Useful, I think we ended up taking advantage of that early this year, didn't we?
Yeah. Yep.
Um, it looks pretty well thought out. I'm, I'm comfortable with taking a...
Jeez, what it is?
Agreed.
Right.
Motion.
Yep. Ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, and Town Code, Section 41-1, to set the date of the special town meetings for Monday, October 25th, 2021. Said town meetings to be held in the Charles Forbes K Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, Littleton.
Second. Motion's made by Matthew, second by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you very much. You have anything that you need to add beyond adjournment?
I'm thinking of adjournments, the only thing left.
Can I ask one quick question, Anthony?
Sure.
What, all of your discussion of the personnel articles reminded me, are you doing, or is someone doing exit interviews with everyone who's, who's left or is leaving?
We have, we have. Several.
Good, okay.
Written reports on those, that, I don't know if we should, I mean, are they on file? If nothing else?
We have them. We have them. They'll be on file.
Okay, all right. I mean, I'm, okay. Just curious, you know, prompted by Matthew's question, how does that process work?
And I think with Jen, um, Jen Deverwood being in the building, um, I think we've got, and your level of professionalism, maybe, maybe that's responsible, we can put on her.
Yes, we could.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then she can transition when Michelle comes on board, and, um, yeah, it's, that's important to, to gather that information, first of all, but also to have it on file, so that we, um, hopefully won't, won't ever need it, but just let me have it. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved it, we adjourn.
Second.
It's moved, and second by Paul. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that is unanimous. So we are adjourned. Our next meeting is the 9th, 9th of August, folks, so.
Unless we need something, who knows?
Unless we need something, there's, there is the possibility, so.
I'm encouraging it, Mr. Chair.
Our next scheduled meeting is August 9th. Folks, enjoy, uh, the summer between now and then, be safe, and, um...
We signed a contract, you're all set.
8:16 p.m., just, just saying, 8:16 p.m.
Thanks, Matthew.
Good job, Chuck.
They look panicky, I think, when talking about August 9th.